Wonderful. I think we'll go ahead and begin then. We welcome all of you out to our weekly meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of Weber County. Today is Tuesday, the 10th day of May of 2015, and this is one of our rare five o'clock meetings. We're happy to have those with us today who are not sometimes able to make it during the day. We have a couple in the audience and we appreciate that. Unfortunately, the shakeup probably has thrown off our online viewership, and I'm seeing exactly zero online right now, but we're... We will continue to broadcast throughout our YouTube channel and hope that if nothing else, it's available online for record as we move forward. So, we'll begin with our meeting today. We have a little bit of a strange, not strange, but a little bit of an odd agenda in that we'll go through our business, which doesn't look too long today. And then, we do have a closed meeting scheduled as part of our agenda. And then, we'll probably have a little bit of time in between, and then back here at six o'clock for our public hearing that has to be held after six o'clock by state statute. So, we will begin with our invocation, which will be offered today by Fatima Frenelius from the Clerk Auditor's Office. We appreciate her coming today. Our pledge of allegiance by Jennifer Graham, and our thought of the day by Commissioner Bell.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are so grateful for this great country that we live in and for the ability we have to participate in our government and for the freedoms we enjoy. Father, we ask that Thy Spirit will be here and will guide our commissioners and the decisions that they need to make. And we pray that we may leave here and arrive at our homes safely this evening. And we say this humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My thought today is here. It's called "Do More." Do more than belong, participate. Do more than care, help. Do more than believe, practice. Do more than be fair, be kind. Do more than forgive, forget. Do more than dream, work.
Great advice. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. We'll move on to our consent items. Item number one is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $99,549.03. Request for approval of warrants number 404-594 through 404-769 in the amount of $2,461,231.07. Request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on May 2nd of 2016. Request from the Community Economic Development Department for approval to sell surplus property parcel number 09-095-0011 to Val and Linda Schultz. Request for approval to set the date of May 17th, 2016, at 10:00 a.m. for a public hearing to discuss amendments to the operating and capital budgets of Weber County. And request for approval to set the date of June 7th, 2016, at 10:00 a.m. for a public hearing regarding consideration and action on a request for the vacation of a private land drain easement on lots 10, 11, 12, 13, and 17 of Mallard Springs subdivision at approximately 2475 South and 4,000 West. Mr. Hatch, we, as I want to, since we do have some other folks in the audience that we don't see often, I remind the audience that we, the commissioners, receive these consent items early in the week, and we, or earlier in the week. I guess there's only really one other day, isn't there? But we do receive them ahead of time and have the chance to review all these consent items. And we, for the public's consumption, to make sure that they know what are in these consent items, we often go to our clerk auditor to explain them just a little bit. So, Ricky?
Awesome. Thank you. And kind of as a threshold, so I don't bore the audience and all of those massive crowds online with details. I usually just use a threshold of about 10%. Whatever makes up 10% of the total balance, I include for discussion here. 10% and over $10,000. So, we had 14 purchase orders this week for $100,000. 42% of that, or $42,000 was for the library, and this was for the Pleasant Valley Branch black box sound system upgrade. 39%, or $39,000, was for 911 Dispatch for a server replacement. Our check run this week, we had 345 checks for $658,000. 26% of that, or $169,000, was for the library, and it was for shelving and office equipment. 19%, or $124,000, was for financial software maintenance. 12%, or $77,000, was for the Housing Authority and housing payments. 7%, or $49,000, went to the jail for culinary and hospital services. And 6%, or $39,000, went for the conference center, and that was spread evenly over about eight different categories of spending.
Commissioners, questions?
I'll make a motion. We accept the consent items as read.
Second.
Motion and a second then to approve and adopt those consent items as read. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. It's unanimous. To our action items, Jennifer, it looks like you've got the first couple. If you want to work your way up, or Marty, or whoever's taking these. Request for approval of a contract binding between Weber County and Ogden Friends of Acoustic Music for the Ninth Annual Ogden Music Festival to be held at Fort Buena Ventura Park on June 3rd through 5th of 2016. Good to see you, Jennifer.
Hello again.
Hello.
Okay, so this is a, this is an event, a recurring event down at the fort. This is a fairly standard contract, except for the fact that we do discount the use of one pavilion to the venue, or excuse me, to the promoter of this event, the OFOAM. And we do that, we make, we make good camping money off of this. We charge for the camping for the three to four days that people are there. So, this is a great revenue generator for the fort and a great way to showcase the fort. So, just looking for approval.
So, doesn't ramp funds help pay for some of this, too?
Michelle Tanner with OFOAM does get some ramp grants to help go toward this event, yes.
Cool. Right. They're great events. This has been a good one over the years. It's been really good.
I'll make a motion. We approve a contract between Weber County and OFOAM.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second before us. Any further discussion, commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. And the second item, another Golden Spike Event Center event. Approval of a contract binding between Weber County and Johnny Golo to hold the May Mania Demolition Derby at the Golden Spike Event Center. This is one of only just two we have, right? One at the fair and then this one?
Actually, this will be, he'll bring one for May and one for October. And then, the one we have at the fair is a different promoter, but it'll be three demo derbies at that facility this year. And this is an instance where we have, we have, we have followed our rate chart with just a few exceptions, and we're looking for a discount because we're able to bring this event back to the facility they've left for about a year and a half down to the Ogden Stadium. And they need to come back out, the experience is such that they just need to, the drivers want to be back out at the Golden Spike. So, we are working with him, though, because part of the safety requirements he has is he has to, if he comes to our facility, he has to invest about $2,000 in straw bales. And straw bales aren't easy to come by in May. So, it's a little bit of an expense, but the safety issue for the drivers. And so, we're trying to work with him on just a few of the fees. We make over 10 grand within about the four hours with our concession stands. So, it's a good event for us. Feels a dark day.
Great.
I'll make a motion. We accept the contract between Weber County and John Golo for the May Mania Demolition Derby.
I just hope they can keep getting cars.
Yes, that's the next challenge. So, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion, commissioners?
No.
Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Sylvia, so good to have you with us. We screwed up the time on you, but you still made it. This is one of our regulars. She is awesome. She comes no matter when it, no matter when we have our meetings. Thank you.
She makes us feel good.
Yes, she does. Okay, item number three. Request for approval of reimbursement agreements binding between Weber County and the following for basic training. And Mrs. Bieber, it looks like you're presenting this. Welcome.
Thank you. We've hired a couple more trainees to send down to the Fred House Corrections Training Academy so that we can hire them as corrections officers when they finish this academy. So, the first agreement I have is with Andrew Acosta, and the second one I have is with Jeannie Hamilton. And these two will be attending the Fred House Academy that begins on May 30th. And the reimbursement agreement covers the cost of their, primarily the cost of their wages and expenses that we pay to them while they're attending the academy, so that they have an obligation to stay with us as employees for a couple of years. So...
Why don't we make them sign on for 100 years? And we wouldn't be losing people if we did it more longer than two years.
That's probably unreasonable.
Okay. Just a thought. No, I'm glad we're doing that. Have, it's been a lot of years since we ran our own academies. Probably don't have enough folks to run an academy, or too expensive to do it ourselves, or...
Both. We typically are sending about three to four at a time, which doesn't constitute a need for us to have our own academy. Plus, as you mentioned, it takes a lot of our current staff time as instructors. And in addition to that, we remodeled our building that we used to use for that, and that's where our CSI is located now. So, we don't have a lot of space to have an academy either. So, this works out really well for us. The Department of Corrections, Fred House Academy, through Public Safety, actually doesn't charge us much to send these individuals down either. So...
Great.
It's a good thing.
It's a good program.
Okay, any questions? Any further questions? All right, let's have a motion, commissioners.
I'll make a motion. We accept the contracts, two separate ones. One with Andrew Acosta, one with Jeannie Hamilton, between Weber County for basic training.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. And Ms. Bieber, one more. It's a request for approval of an agreement binding between Weber County and the U.S. Forest Service for the fiscal year 2016 Cooperative Law Enforcement, Annual Operating Plan, and Financial Plan.
This is an agreement between the U.S. Forest Service, as you mentioned. The agreement goes through September 30th of 2016, and primarily, it lays out our responsibilities and the Forest Service responsibilities in this agreement that reimburses enforcement activities on U.S. Forest Service land, specifically patrolling U.S. Forest Service roads and campgrounds. So, they'll reimburse us up to $48,000 for the year for us to, for the sheriff's office to participate in those activities.
So, a few years ago, it used to be 60,000, correct?
That is correct. And then, last year, it went down to 54,000, and now it's down to 48. My understanding is the Forest Service was asked to make cuts across the board, 10%, and then another 10%, so that's what our contract was.
So, do we continue giving them the same service they used to get?
We have a certain number of hours that they'll reimburse us for, and that's what our deputies will sign up to cover those shifts. And Lieutenant Talbot in our office has done a really good job at cutting back some of those shifts based on the money that they give us as reimbursement. So, we've, we've modified our shifts a little bit compared to the money they used to give us to what it is now.
So, everything we do in the county, the state pays us less, the feds pay us less, but we have to continue doing what we do. So, our taxpayers have to continue subsidizing all this. Just my thought on it.
Well, and it's just frustrating. It's even more frustrating from the federal level, because from the state level, we have to understand that we are a political subdivision of the state, and it all revolves around what the state tells us. But it's not the way it's supposed to be with the feds. We're not a political subdivision of the feds. And unfortunately, they continue to give us this kind of garbage, frankly, for lack of a better term, where we, we know that we've got to respond to these calls. We have no choice but to respond to calls on the Forest Service property. And they continue to shave and shave and shave, and knowing that we, that we have to do that, they just, they continue to nail us. And it's frustrating. I mean, I guess from one perspective, we're glad to get $48,000 because the way that they've acted, you know, several federal agencies have acted in the past. You know, there's just not, a lot of it has just completely evaporated. And, you know, this is frustrating to me, but... So, I'm glad that we have the 48, but, you know, I don't know how we, what else we do other than sit here and voice our frustration every year and, and then keep out, keep going out there and doing a good, the good work, which is funded, unfortunately, on the backs of Weber County taxpayers when, when it really shouldn't be. So, anyway, frustrating yet reality nowadays. So, I hope that as the discussion continues around the management of our federal lands, that this is the type of thing that people pay attention to. And, and I think that when we have the state much more actively involved in that management, it makes a big difference in the way that, in the quality in which that is maintained. So, that's just an editorial comment, but I think one that's proven to be true over and over and over again. So...
So, in section two, it clearly states, "Patroling the following campground, development sites, or dispersed areas." And third, second paragraph down, it says, "The U.S. Forest Service has special needs for extra help when recreation loads are heavy in and around Pine View Reservoir." And one of the issues we're having right now is issues with patrolling Pine View Reservoir after hours. And we take a particular interest in this because we have constituents that are concerned about enforcement of laws on Pine View after hours. And the issue is, why isn't the sheriff's office putting more individuals on the lake at night to deal with it? And the reason is just because we get $48,000 a year to do that, and there's just not enough of those funds to go around. And as Commissioner Gibson says, we have to then find additional funds out of the sheriff's office budget to do that, when the reality of it is, even in their own contract, they recognize that there's a recreation load on and around that recreational area. So, again, for those individuals who can, can spread the word for us, that isn't a responsibility solely for the sheriff's office. It's a responsibility for the Forest Service to help us and participate in enforcing those laws.
Right. And I, and I think if you, if you read the way the contract is written, I think primarily, they want us patrolling the roads and the campgrounds. And then, as you mentioned, and they, when they have special needs and when we have resources available, then they'll accept help in these other areas or expect help in these other areas. And with the workload that we have just on the roads and the campgrounds, there really isn't that much left to patrol the reservoir and the other areas that are listed here. So, they do the best they can, and I'll take that back to them.
And the interesting thing, too, Commissioner, I, the Forest Service has their challenges. I'm not, they're bad enough, good in ways, but they have their challenges. Here's the problem. Just, let's just be dang happy that, that it's not the BLM. Because they would actually show up and break down doors for the guy that picks up a two-bit arrowhead across the fence line, you know? So, so we're, we're just, we're going to take this one and be glad that we have it, I guess.
And again, my only point was is the sheriff sometimes takes the brunt of the issue specifically on the lake and the reservoir right now. And the reality of it is, the responsibility doesn't fall within the sheriff's. It falls within the Forest Service. And the sheriff has been kind enough to put staff on that to help address the issue.
I think it's a good point. Again, our, our communities covering that taxpayer, our taxpayers are covering that expense, and the sheriff's office, I think, true to form, covers that extremely well. And we get more bang for our buck than we really should from them. We appreciate it very much.
All right, commissioners, would you like to move on this item?
Oh, I would love to, and let's hope and pray they drop some more off next year with their 10% decrease. I'll make a motion. We accept contract with Weber County and the U.S. Forest Service. Make a note, not happy with the contract, but we'll take what we can get. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second then to approve this contract. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Appreciate it. Passes. To our final item before our closed session is our public comment. I think we might have a couple who would like to comment today. If you, if you would, come on up to the podium and state your name for the record. Good to see you again, Mrs. Perry.
Yeah, you too. My name is Debbie Perry, and I live in the county. And the sheriff's never been called when I swam up at Pine View, so... Hopefully, I'm not taking any of those dollars.
We're happy to do it for you.
Oh, good. Well, I love it up there. So...
It's great.
Anyway, I would like to take this time to update the commissioners on thoughts, concerns, and potential solutions to issues surrounding the county's construction of Skyline Drive. This road is important to the citizens who live in its corridor. They use the current and will use the future road, not only for travel, but for recreation and active transport as well. The inclusion of a bike route on Skyline shows it is an important part of the community in many ways. I would like to thank in advance all those who have helped me and some of the others who've been involved to understand the many facets and the, and the many considerations that need to be taken into account regarding this project and our concerns. So, I personally tried to attempt to reach out to a lot of different people just to understand different points of view. And those people include, but are not limited to Commissioner Gibson, Holland Wilbanks, Ogden City Councilman Nadolsky, South Ogden City Council members, and the Weber County and Ogden City engineers. Last Monday, May 2nd, at 5:30 p.m., there was a community meeting held at the Comby residence. There were 75 citizens in attendance coming from the Weber County, South Ogden City, and Ogden City neighborhoods that are affected in service by Skyline Drive. Also in attendance at that meeting was Commissioner Gibson, and we're grateful for that, Holland Wilbanks, and Sally Orr of the South Ogden City Council. An hour before the meeting began, Guy Perry, who's my husband, toured the area with Commissioner Gibson and Holland in order for them to gain a better understanding of the area and the project. The meeting was orderly, and many concerns and questions were addressed. Those in attendance appreciated the time that Commissioner Gibson and Mrs. Wilbanks gave. As a result of the, of that meeting and the information gathered before and since then, there emerged three items that the citizens of the Skyline Corridor would like to see addressed and hopefully resolved. I will address only two of those at this time. The first concern is about the safety of those who live on and cross Skyline Drive, particularly the students of Younta Elementary. A steady stream of those children walk and ride bikes and scooters down Eastwood Boulevard, and they cross Skyline Drive during a peak morning traffic hour and a commonly commuted afternoon hour. The community would like to see the current two-way stop at that intersection become a four-way, and a crossing guard hired as the vehicle count increases, because the assumption is that the vehicle count will increase as the road is completed. And that the speed limit on Skyline Drive in that area to remain at 25 miles an hour. And as a whole, we feel that those requests on that are pretty reasonable and appropriate for those circumstances. Additionally, there was a standard examiner article back from March of 2015 that explained that the county's original plan was to put wide sidewalks and bike lanes on both sides of the new construction. And it's the community's feeling that having continuous sidewalks on both sides of the road is the safest approach to the heavily used area. And we would like to see those things remain in the project. Because right now, we were told that on part of it, we might not have a sidewalk on one of the sides. So, we would like that to be looked at and, and hopefully maintained as we were told originally that we would have that. And so, the second concern is about the completion of the landscape medians that currently exist on the Ogden City section of Skyline. Originally, a conceptual plan, I realize it wasn't an engineered plan, but a conceptual plan that was drawn up by Ogden City to help Weber County get the funds showed the landscape medians as part of the plan. Also, as property was being purchased from Jonathan Ford, he was informed that medians would indeed be included. Since then, they have been removed from the project, and citizens are upset with this change of plan. And it is, you know, after I've personally just been asking questions, it is very understandable that the county is not in the business of adding medians or maintaining them in the road projects that they undertake. And that may not be a typical situation for the county. But I asked the commission to consider the completion of the county section of Skyline Drive as part of a bigger project ultimately shared with Ogden City, who has set the precedence on the treatment of this particular road. It would be fair moving forward for the county to be able to cite a partnership approach with Ogden City as a reason to give for this exception to their normal operational procedures and practices. Fortunately, the Weber County section of Skyline in question, Comby Road up to the current end of Skyline, is less than a quarter of a mile long. So, it's like less than one lap around the track. This piece represents less than 10% of the total length of 2.25 miles from Comby to Weber State University. Ogden City is in the planning phases of adding medians on their new section and then their existing section so that they finish that theme down to the stadium. So, the small Weber County piece would more than likely only require two medians to keep the medians consistent and continuous and tie in nicely to the landscape roundabout already planned at Comby Road. It has been expressed that these medians would not only provide continuity, but beautification, increase land values, which increases your tax revenue, and traffic calming and safety in winter conditions. And then, as homes are built along the new road and are valued at high market prices typical of that area, it seems logical that the increase in county tax revenue would provide enough income to offset any additional costs in adding and maintaining the median. Two different city engineers, including the Ogden City engineers, have expressed that adding in medians at this point in the project would not be difficult, nor would it change the engineering of the road itself. It would seem reasonable, doable, sustainable, and low hassle for the county to arrange subcontract with Ogden City crew that will already care for one and a half to two miles worth of the Ogden City medians to care for the remaining two that will be coexisting with those. It also does need to be noted in closing that Jonathan Ford, landowner of that portion of Skyline, has expressed a desire to find a way to work together to enable this beautification to take place by possibly helping in the cost of the landscape installation and discussing other ways to cooperatively and reasonably bring the medians to fruition and provide for their maintenance. And of course, I can't speak all the details for him, but he has definitely given me some feedback that he's willing to, to put best some stuff into that, to make that happen. And I was happy to hear that. So, while a project of this size has many cogs that need to turn to enable its completion, the citizens surrounding Skyline's corridor would like the county to address and find workable solutions for these two issues of safety and medians. Timely communication on these matters is also important to these group of people and can be done through the contact information that will be provided to Ms. Wilbanks. So, I will email her. I told her I would, all this stuff. And I didn't know if I needed to turn in. We actually had people sign in at the meeting with their addresses, their signatures, like a roll. And I made copies. I don't know if you want me to turn them in here for the record, or if you want me to email, or...
We can make sure that Ms. Wilbanks gets them if you leave them over.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
I'm going to say a couple things.
Okay.
I'm going to stay there for a minute.
Okay.
Want you to ask her questions, or can she sit down?
Oh, she can sit down. You can sit down.
You can turn that in.
Oh, okay.
So, when we started this project a couple of years ago, I'm just going to correct one thing. I had conversations with Jonathan Ford on a regular basis, and he knew there was no island in there. And I told him, I said, "If you want an island in there, you're going to have to pay for it." And he said, "I don't think I want an island in there." So, I'm telling you right now that that was a discussion that we had, him and I had, many times in front of many people. Now, I'm not saying that we don't change ways here and put an island in the middle. I'm not saying, I'm not against making some changes here. But we just need to know that that's the premises that we've been operating under. But we just need to know that that's the premises that we've been operating under for a long time until the last couple of months. And I hadn't, you know, I knew there's some folks would ask, "Is there gonna be an island?" I said, "No." And most of it, where the island will be, is all through Jonathan's property. Every bit of it is. And that was a discussion that we had from, you can, way before this even started. Before we even started working on it, I went to Jonathan and I talked to Scott, and I says, "Hey, this is, we have an opportunity, we can have some money if we want to put this road in. What do you guys think about that?" We didn't, we didn't say yes, didn't say no, I just said, "We've got some opportunity to finish this plan out if we want to do it." And so, you know, we had those public hearings on it, and we didn't, there was quite a few people there at the school, because I went there to it, and there was no, nobody had mentioned anything about those islands then. Not that we can't do some stuff now, but just so you know, we just didn't, just all of a sudden, just take it out of the system. It's something that has we been, as we've been working on, and then in the last month, I talked to your husband, I don't know, probably a month ago. And then it's become a, the island was, has become a bigger deal than it was before. So I hadn't heard really anything before on that, so. Anyway, just so you know on that, and yes, we are taking that completely into consideration. On the stop signs, we discussed that today. On the four-way stop there, I've had somebody send me a note and they want a four-way stop on Jared and Eastwood. And so, you know, and maybe we need them both places, I don't know. And so that's something that we are looking at. Our engineer assured us today that they're working on, they don't know exactly what they're gonna need on Eastwood and Skyline. Now, I have a feeling it's gonna be a busy road. Now, I don't know that for sure, but I think there's gonna be some traffic on it, so. Yeah, those are things we can do. Twenty-five miles an hour makes sense. It already is twenty-five miles an hour on Skyline. I don't know what it is in Ogden City. I have no idea.
Right now, it's thirty, but there's discussion, I think, about twenty-five.
So, yeah. And so, so we're, you know, I'm good with the twenty-five, that's an easy thing to do. And the crossing guard is an interesting thought, so would the crossing guard need to be at Skyline or Jared? I don't know. I don't know where we would put a crossing guard, or, so...
Probably at Skyline, just because I watch those kids, and that is their main route, like the safe route to school, is that what they call it?
Right. Oh, the kids coming from Ogden, so. Anyway, thank you, I appreciate your input there.
I will just add that I felt like the meeting was productive a couple of days ago, and we have had conversations since then. Frankly, we've been waiting for for the information to come back to us with those comments from the individuals that has now been turned in. So we'll take that into account as well. As Commissioner Bell said, we've had a couple of discussions about this already today. We had one with our engineering team to evaluate what kind of changes would be appropriate and even frankly even possible at this point in the process. And second, I think we took, we have a positive, had a positive discussion with the administration in Ogden City, which probably should have been done a long time ago as far as how the top section, the new Ogden City section and the Weber County section relate to one another, and are there advances or progress that can be made along with that. And so I think we're, we're working towards it. I would just encourage the residents to be patient, but also, you know, understand. I mean, I understand those concerns, and frankly, Mrs. Perry, you are very articulate. And if I hadn't dug into this the last couple of days, I'd be tempted to believe that it's just as simple as you made it sound, because it, but, and I don't mean that detriment or derogatorily, but it is a complex situation and we are, and we are a long ways into it, so.
Plus, I want to comment that we did spend two hours with Rocky Mountain Power today on an issue that you might talk about, I'm not sure.
We have some positive...
But we spent two hours going over stuff with them, so, and we're...
So we're working at it. We just want you to know that we have heard the concerns, we'll continue to hear the concerns, and we appreciate the fact that they've been brought to our attention. And frankly, in a respectful way, I mean, that, I hope that some of my friends from my neighborhood on 12th Street would learn that that might be a little better way to go about things. And I said that on the record, didn't I? Well, I meant to. I appreciated the fact...
You'll have to explain that in church on Sunday.
I appreciated the fact that even though there was disagreement, it was done with respect. And I owe that to, I think, the two of you who kind of led that meeting, so, thanks. I didn't know if you wanted to comment. If you do, come on up.
Okay, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We were here also this morning.
Sorry.
And we were told by Michelle...
This is where we live.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So she's anxiously waiting for you to state your name and address, even though I know who you are, she doesn't.
Yes, so good afternoon. My name is Nancy Waterfall, and I live at 2060 East Ryan Circle, and that's in unincorporated Weber County. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I really do appreciate you coming out last week. I think that was a very positive, productive thing, and I think it helped the residents have a better feeling for how this works and that it really, people need to get involved if they want to see changes or they want to make contributions, so I really appreciated that. So I have a written thing, so I don't go over three minutes. So Weber County is constructing a continuation of Skyline Drive in southeast Weber County. I join the concerns raised by Debbie Perry, namely that the county take advantage of this opportunity to build a roadway which considers the surrounding natural landscape to include curators such as landscape medians and bike paths. And that bike path would just be a continuation of the Bonneville Trail, which we have in our neighborhood, and then it just stops. So I agree with those things, but my particular concern today is the plan by Rocky Mountain to install high-power, high-voltage power lines and poles in this residential neighborhood. Rocky Mountain Power intends to add those power poles and lines as a part of the Skyline Drive project. In a meeting that we had with them, they indicated that it was not necessary to upgrade their system, but something that they just wanted to do. And so I have six points that I would like to address regarding that. Underground utilities are the standard in this residential neighborhood, and future utilities should also be underground for several reasons. Number one, safety. Comby Road is a winding, narrow country road and has been the scene of traffic accidents involving cars and power poles. And Matt will attest to that. Those poles constitute a danger to vehicular traffic, and downed power lines create a significant hazard to people. Number two, health. Studies indicate that overhead power lines contribute to adverse health conditions, including cancer. And even though it is, we have our older people, and I put myself in that category, there are a lot of young children in this neighborhood as well. And for health reasons, it is not a good policy to have above-ground utility poles. Appearance. Do I need to say more? Overhead power lines are distracting. They are an eyesore. They collect wind-blown objects, and shoes that children throw up there or other such people are a hazard to birds, birds of prey, and other fowl, and in this instance, are inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhoods. Number four, power continuation. In my neighborhood, as recently as Friday of last week, the power was out for six hours. Rocky Mountain said on their website the reason for that was a power pole that had caught fire. With the recent windstorms that we've had, many county neighborhoods experienced extensive power loss. Other areas in the county experienced power outages that lasted for days from downed lines caused by the high winds. My mother's ninety-two years old and she lives alone. Her power was out from Saturday evening until late Monday night. And she lives in Ogden City, but again, we're looking at the reasoning for above-ground utility lines. Number five, cost-effective. Long-term cost savings are inherent with underground utilities. Period. Any additional cost to install underground utilities is offset by the long-term benefits. Number six, consistency and fairness. Rocky Mountain Power requires property landowners to bury their power lines for new subdivisions, new homes, or even to get power to extend to a farm, an outbuilding, a barn, a chicken coop. That's what we were told, it would have to go underground. For obvious reasons, Rocky Mountain Power should be held to the same standard that they put us in and be required to bury their planned expansion of their power lines along Skyline Drive. I respectfully request that the county require Rocky Mountain Power, through its agreements with them, that these power lines be placed underground. On Monday, May 2nd, our community met with Commissioner Gibson and Holland Willbanks to discuss these Skyline Drive development issues. I would like to hear a follow-up and from each of you regarding this matter and what the status is moving forward. And again, I really appreciate your time and your interests and for coming out and seeing and meeting some of the people who live out there, and I'm just really grateful for that, and I really hope that the issue of above-ground lines can be addressed. As a private property owner, I really have no leverage with Rocky Mountain Power. I have none. And that was evident in the meeting we had with them. You have the power. It rests with you. I have no leverage with them whatsoever. And this is a big deal. We have our master plan for our property too, and it includes another home for us when we get too old. And I do not want to be looking at four large power poles and all the lines. And so I have a master plan, you have a master plan. I understand we have to cooperate, we want to cooperate, and we have worked. So, we have, and I know I'm past three minutes, but I believe that Jared and Michelle have acted in good faith with us, and I believe we have with them. And I think it is unfortunate that in March of 2016, Rocky Mountain Power presented a plan that was not a part of the agreement that we had officially said, "This looks good," and wrote and signed a letter of memorandum to that point. This completely changes that. It was not a part of that consideration. And I'm, I feel sad that it has come to, you know, what it has come to. And so for that reason, I hope that this whole power issue can be resolved in a way that we can compromise, because we have been working on that all these many months. And to have this happen now is just unfortunate, and I think Jared would say, you know, it was just as much a surprise to him as it was to us. So, good luck, guys. Thanks so much.
Appreciate it. Let me just say two things. First of all, in response, I need to apologize, and I hope you'll take this back to the group that we met with the other day, because I did not do a very good job of explaining one thing, and that is I was under a different impression of what the meeting format was. I was thinking that I was going on a tour with a handful of folks, frankly. And because of that, I didn't invite other commissioners. And by the time it was apparent to me that this was this type of a meeting, the other commissioners were not able to come. The reason that I bring that up is because I heard some murmuring after the meeting about the lack of other commissioners being there, and I just, out of respect and fairness to the other commissioners, that was my fault. They are very interested in what's going on here, especially Commissioner Bell, because of his, the fact that he lives there and in the neighborhood, and was upset, and frankly, in a positive way, I think, that he was not able to be there and represent what his knowledge of the project has been. So I just wanted to make that clear, that there was no, you know, Commissioner Bell is very interested in this. And I apologize for my misunderstanding that didn't allow for him to be there on a pre-arranged issue that he had. Secondly, specifically to the power issue, I just want to mention, unfortunately, I mean, I don't know how it all got here, all that that you described, I'll take your word for it, I believe it. But the reality is, it is different. And it's not by our rule, it's by state statute, and they are not required. That's what we have been told over and over again, they're just not required to live to the same standards that they hold us to. And that's unfortunate, and we're gonna do everything that we can to work with them. And as Commissioner Bell mentioned, we had a very lively discussion and good discussion, I think, this morning, where we have some hope that there might be some movement on certain issues. But, but I, again, they're just, they're just, that's by ruling of the state legislature and the Public Service Commission, that they just are not required to, they can say to a private property owner, "You have to do this," and they don't have to, they don't have to do this. So it's unfortunate, but that's kind of the way it is, so we're...
If I can just say one last thing, I hope that as the commissioners, you understand that the Waterfalls want to work this through.
I understand.
And we have been more than willing to work with Jared and Michelle, and I think they will tell you that.
I think they are your advocates in this, and they're working...
No question.
Towards it.
And Nancy, I've known you guys for a hundred years, and I got a great working relationship, but I talked to Scott. I had no idea where we were on this until he called me yesterday. And we had a discussion, a two-hour discussion with Rocky Mountain Power today, amongst other things. And we've got some concerns, and we presented them with them, so, yeah.
We will certainly make sure that they hear what our opinion is on that, okay?
Well, let us know, because, you know, we want to work this thing...
We will. I was looking to see if I got an email from him today. He was gonna send me one today or tomorrow, and it's not there yet, so.
Is that from Scott?
No, from Rocky Mountain.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks for coming out.
All right, we will close our...
Sorry we weren't here earlier.
Well, which life living in the 21st century is...
We will close our public comments segment and move to item H, which is that I need a motion to approve a closed executive session to discuss strategy relating to the purchase of real estate or sale of real estate, as well as strategy relating to imminent or ongoing litigation.
Motion made.
Second. Can I have a second? Okay, roll call? Roll call on that?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoover?
Aye. Aye. Motion passes, we'll be in closed meeting, we'll be back here as soon as we're done. If you're interested, you can stick around for this wonderful conclusion.
Commissioner, where is that meeting going to be held?
In the room behind us. Back in our public meeting, having come from our closed executive session. Oh, we're not recording yet? Oh, sorry, Boktama. Right here. Okay, we're back in our public meeting, having come from our closed executive session. There were no decisions made, only a lot of good conversation and discussion. And so, we will...
Ricky, slow down next time, not so much input.
Okay, so we're to the point on our agenda of the public hearing, which was to begin after 6:00 PM, and it is 6:10, so we're confident that there are... That those who have wanted to be here for this public hearing are here. And looking in the audience, I see none. So, we will, we do need a motion to adjourn the public meeting and convene the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, to the item then at hand, Roger Brunker proposing the dissolution of the Ogden Valley Natural Gas District.
Commissioners, just real quick, since there's probably no opposition, in 1996, there was a determination made that they were going to try to get a natural gas line going up to the valley. A lot of the people over in the valley, after the creation, they decided it wasn't feasible to actually go through with that, so it never happened. I've been trying for 20 years to get it off the ropes. It hasn't really been an issue until the last few years, when technology is such now that we have to mesh our nomenclature with the state, because everything's automatically downloaded. And when we do that, they don't have it created down there, we have it created here, so we don't match up, and so it causes all kinds of problems for me. And this will make my life tons easier, so I got on the attorneys' backs, and they were so nice to get this all taken care of for us. And so, we are finally getting it done, 20 years after the fact, but we would like to propose that you dissolve the natural gas district that was never really put into use at all. It was just created, but nothing was ever done with it.
Okay, so two things, just first of all, I love the word nomenclature, so I just want you to use that more frequently.
I will do that.
I'd like you to spell it.
N-O-M-A-N-C-L-A-T-U-R-E.
Spell it.
Okay, and secondly, just look at it this way, Roger. Think of how many commissioners you've dealt with in 20 years, and this is the ones right here that have made your life easier.
See, it's all Cortland and this commission, and it's done. I'm going to start doing a lot more things.
It was Dave.
So that it's got a couple million dollars sitting in that account, you're going to move that where to?
My retirement fund.
Ooh.
There's nothing in the account, because there was nothing there.
There was nothing ever set up.
There was nothing ever done, so.
Okay, and for the record, Roger's been really crabby the past 20 years, and so I'm looking forward to...
And 20 more years of happiness.
Smiling as we speak.
20 more years, wait a minute.
All right, public comment. Is there any from the public who would like to comment? And I already know the answer to this, because I can see the public room, the public space, and there is no one here, so we will move to our next item, which is a request for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous. Now we can take action on the public hearing if we so desire.
I so moved that we dissolution, dissolve, dissolution of the Ogden Valley Natural Gas District.
It's Resolution 12.
Resolution 12.
I'll second Resolution 12.
Okay, Resolution 12 to...
Dissolution.
Dissolve...
Ogden Valley.
The Ogden Valley Natural Gas District.
And it's a roll call, and I'll go first. Aye.
All right, Commissioner Ebert.
Aye.
Commissioner Bell.
Aye.
Commissioner Gibson.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. And to our final item.
Make a motion adjourned.
Make a motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, we're adjourned. Have a nice week. See you next week.